I'd like to call to order this meeting, the Raleigh City Council Work Session. We did have a couple of items, but the people we were going to take up first, people aren't here, although I do want to announce, the Raleigh Housing Authority had scheduled a bus tour for Tuesday. I think I was the only one at the time you signed up, and they have rescheduled that for Friday from 1:30 to 4:30. So if anyone wants to go on that, just in case there's five of us, we know it's a public meeting, but just wanted to announce that. Okay. And then we have one other item to come before us, and this is a resolution that I saw it in the paper. I'm sure a lot of you read this in the paper, and councilors Mandell and Stewart brought it up to me too, about the possibility of us waiving the fares for our bus riders on Election Day to further enable people to get to the polls. So I was able to get in touch with almost everybody, which reminds me that Mr. Stevenson is absent and excused. Okay?
Mayor, if we could, one quick thing, in the spirit of pulling things together quickly, we had asked Attorney's Office to look at some things, and I think Robin had a couple of suggestions at the end. Maybe if you could help him with that, we can just read it into the record.
Yes, we were asked to insert some statutory authority and sort of shore it up a little bit, and we have done that. If you want to see the more final copy, I can pass that around.
It's really, really, it's just technical language.
Technical language.
The X's are?
Yeah. No, it's no substantive change. It's just, we were asked to insert the code and statutory provisions.
Mayor, I just have one question.
Okay.
I have no problem with moving forward with this. Just one question as it moves forward to the next elections that are, will be upon us in a year, and then in two years from now, are we saying that we will also offer the same free fare day for those elections as well?
Well, this resolution says that we're going to offer it for November 6, 2018. I think that if we decided to do something in the future, that would be a discussion we'd have around budget time.
Well, I do think that if we're going to offer it for one election, we do need to probably think about what it means in terms of other elections, so that we treat all elections the same.
And we may want to, we don't have time before this election, but we may want to figure out how to actually tie the free bus fare to voting.
Yes, I think that would be a good suggestion.
So we can have that discussion.
And so one other thing I would like to request, so that we know what the ridership count is that day compared to a normal Tuesday, just to see if we're having actually any impact at all.
Okay.
And definitely, it's something I fully support, and I agree with Councilman Crowder, future elections, we definitely need to consider this, especially from a budgeting standpoint, and making sure too, that it's impactful. We actually have routes that go by election stations and precincts. I think that's something that we need to look at going forward, but as for today, I move for adoption of this resolution.
Second. Second, I have an motion, second, on favor.
Aye.
I pose. I would suggest we even maybe challenge Uber and Lyft to help. But we can talk about that next year. Okay, Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So this is the first of three work sessions associated with the Dorothea Dix Park. There's several other topics, and that will be laid out in here. Obviously, there's quite a bit of work that's been done as a part of the community. So with that, I will ask Kate Pierce with Parks, Recreation and Cultural Resources to kick us off.
Great. So, good afternoon. First, thank y'all for being here this afternoon and scheduling these work sessions. We hope to provide a lot of information, and then have a great discussion with you about the future of Dix Park. I'd also like to say thank you to all the members of the Dix Park Conservancy, the Executive Committee, Advisory Committee, and work groups that are here. We appreciate y'all taking the time out of your schedule to join us today. So for the agenda, I'll run through a brief project update, spend a good bit of time talking about the outreach and engagement to date, then hand the mic over to Matt Urbanski with Michael Van Valkenburg Associates, who will run through kind of where we are with the master plan, and then go into discussion with Council. As the manager mentioned, this is the first of three work sessions. During the second and third work session, we will talk about, the second one will be focused on priorities, partnerships, and phasing, and the third will be focused on implementation and final recommendations. I will note that the funding discussion, which I'm sure all of you are very interested in, will come into play at the next work session and the final work session. So when we talk about partnerships and the funding potential there, when we talk about implementation, so know that conversation is coming. I'm sure it's top of mind for you, as it is most of us in the room, so that that funding piece will spread across the November 26th and January 7th work session. So I think most of you have seen this slide before, but just to kind of bring us all on the same page, the work we're doing here in Raleigh is, I think, transformational and is going to have a generational impact on this community. Adrian Benipay, who was the former New York Parks Commissioner, now with the Trust for Public Land, called the creation of Dix Park one of the most important and exciting urban park projects in the U.S. today. And that's primarily for a couple of reasons. One, there's this beautiful acreage, 307.9 acres, located in the heart of our community. In addition, there's some really unique challenges. We have 85 buildings totaling 1.2 million square feet of building. Most great parks don't start with an entire campus inside of them. So how do we address these challenges in the future of the park? And also, how does this park relate to, connect to, interface with the great system of greenways and trails and other parks and community centers we have throughout our community? So for all of those reasons, I think the, where we are with the master plan has taken into account a lot of these questions, and we look forward to sharing some of those with you. In addition, I just wanted to point out a couple of parallel planning efforts that are happening. So most of you are aware that facilitated through the City of Raleigh and Dix Park Conservancy, that the Department of Agriculture State Farmers Market is starting a master plan process too, to think about the future of the farmers market in partnership with the creation of Dix Park. And a firm HH Architecture is leading that work, so we're excited about that. In addition, I meet monthly with the Office of Real Estate for Centennial Campus that oversees the planning and design of Spring Hill. So that is a very coordinated effort as well, and we look forward to that partnership as it moves forward. The other effort that's happening is, about a month ago, Councilwoman Crowder asked the Planning Department to take a look at the edges surrounding the park. I believe they're coming back to Council this month, or actually November, it's still October, and with some ideas about how to address that. So we really feel like, in addition to the Dix Park Master Plan, we're also being very mindful and very intentional about the planning that's happening all around the park as well. So with that, I'd like just to spend a little bit of time talking about where we are in the process and how that's unfolding with our community engagement. So the intent of a master plan is really to be a guidebook to help develop the future of Dix Park. It is intended to preserve opportunities. So, for instance, Matt always talks about how when Frederick Law Olmsted designed Central Park, there were no playgrounds in Central Park. But over time, as community values change, playgrounds were wanted. So how do we preserve opportunity by creating a really strong foundational master plan that looks to accommodate changing values over time? So that preserve opportunity is a key factor of this planning process. In addition, we know that we're going to need to be very thoughtful and strategic about building partnerships to accomplish the goals of the master plan. So how are we going to focus resources in the right way to ensure that we're able to accomplish the ambitious goals that we set forward? In addition, you know, I think one of the biggest pieces that we've worked on is really building a bold vision through community consensus. And so the amount of engagement we've done, the amount of outreach, has really resulted in what I feel is a pretty strong public support of where we are today and where we are moving with the master plan. And this is just a picture of the last community meeting at Union Station, which I think just exemplifies the, there is no lack of interest in this planning process. Just to bring us where we are, where we've been, we kicked off the project in July, August 2017, and then we went through kind of this incremental discussion of very specific topic areas. So for instance, our first community meeting was focused on transportation. Then we looked at the site, the natural features, the built features. We then moved into a discussion about the buildings. And then this last meeting in October, we really focused this discussion on the park and its program. So we were kind of incremental in the way that we've been looking at things. And then finally, this last community meeting, you saw things come together and to what people started to really get excited about for the future vision of the park. This will continue over the next few months. We're going out and kind of doubling down on our outreach and engagement to share the current draft plan with as many community groups as possible. We look forward to coming to Council officially in early 2019 for adoption, and then we'll move into the next phases of kind of feasibility work and design work for the future of Dix Park. So I think one of the things that city staff has been very intentional about is, and with the support of the Dix Park Conservancy and all of our partners, is that one of our guiding goals is that for this place to be a park that this entire community embraces, we need to encourage the entire community to participate in the process. And it's not just about having public meetings. It really is about building an engagement process that creates experiences and builds connections and relationships with the people that will use, be the users of this park moving forward. So we've been very intentional about, yes, having a lot of fun stuff to do at the park, but also sharing master plan ideas during all of those events and programs. Supporting all of this has been the Dix Park Conservancy, and while public-private park partnerships, a P4, not a P3, which I learned a couple of weeks ago, are very common throughout most major cities, this is the first time here in Raleigh we're really doing one at kind of a scale for a project like this. As you, most of you are aware, we entered into a memorandum of understanding with the Dix Park Conservancy in 2016. They provided the funding to pay for the master plan process. They also provided the funding for all the programs and events. And I was in an urban park leadership course two weeks ago, and the fact that we're starting together with a partnership like the Dix Park Conservancy is actually something very unique nationally. So most times, Conservancy partners come in when there's an issue, or there's a problem, or a park is failing. The fact that we're starting together with a nonprofit at the beginning of the life of Dix Park is something pretty special that I think we should be proud of in this community. And the park, the Dix Park Conservancy, many of folks who are here today, is made up of a lot of community and business leaders whose intent really is to ensure the creation and long-term success of Dix Park through both philanthropy and advocacy. So just knowing that that partner exists to support us along the way, I think is something that we should be proud of. What we did at the beginning of the planning process was write this very intentional outreach and engagement strategy housed in an equity framework. It was divided between kind of experience-based outreach and traditional outreach. And some of it has been more successful than others. So just to kind of focus on a couple of the things, this is an infographic that has shared kind of outreach to date. So you can see how we've continued to build outreach over the course of the past two and a half years. But I wanted just to highlight, the numbers don't really do it justice, that, for instance, in our 175 events, we've had 15 educational lectures. We brought in speakers from across the country and around the world to talk about the potential of Dix Park. So just a couple of weeks ago, we had a woman named Carolyn Finney who came in and talked about her book, Black Faces, White Spaces, and what it means to really have an equitable place and an equitable park in your community. And a year ago this week, we brought in Gil Penalosa, who, whose group talks about eight to 80 cities, just thinking about designing a park that meets the needs of an eight-year-old and an 80-year-old. All of these educational events have been designed to really kind of help inform our community about the potential transformation of the future of Dix Park. In addition, we have reached out to about 90 community groups to date. This is not inclusive of going to all the CAC, so we also have done all of that through the planning process. But we've met with eight-person book clubs to 200-person professional organizations. So just really trying to get the word out about the plan, planning process. In addition, our traditional outreach, you know, we've had four community meetings. Each meeting has brought more people over time, and we have a number of established committees, the executive advisory and work groups, that have been meeting across the planning process. Just a couple of other fun facts for us, the, one thing I wanted to point out is that when we started, we had this idea of community road shows, going out to all of the neighborhood centers, neighborhood and park community centers, and hosting smaller meetings. Those were really poorly attended, so we actually turned our efforts into working on going to places where people already are. So for instance, going to Fiesta del Pueblo, or going to the African-American Cultural Festival, or going to the International Festival, and taking the park planning process to where the community is already going. And that's been a lot more successful than holding these one-off meetings in different community areas. In addition, I'll just point out, we also have done a lot of online research, outreach. So Neighborland has about 13,000 users right now. It's our online community engagement platform. It's where we actually source a lot of ideas that have informed the planning process, and are very active on social media, which continues to grow. But I think more than those numbers, it's really the faces of the people that show up, it's the excitement. We had our Fall Festival on Saturday. The majority of people I've talked to had never been to the park before. And so the fact that we're still getting new people coming out, learning about the park, learning about the master plan, sharing their feedback, sharing their concerns, has been one of the really intentional pieces that we've worked towards. In addition, just to give you a sense of the scale and impact, the sunflowers, which I've shared this slide previously, but, you know, over the course of two weeks, we had over 3 million social media impressions, and around 15,000 people showed up for a day-of event, that we were able to then transition into re-engaging those people through an email sign-up for the master plan discussion. So the conversation continues, and it's something that I'm, you know, we haven't, we have not obviously reached everyone in the entire community, but we have provided the opportunity for people to participate in this process, and I think that's what's most important. In addition, one of the most powerful things, you know, typically, now I'm not going to stereotype, but how many people under the age of 20 do we have here? Maybe not too many. But we're designing a park, right? We're designing a park for future generations. So the outreach we've done through the Parks, Recreation and Cultural Resource Summer Camps, the YMCA, this has really been an opportunity for us to talk to the kids that will be the users of this park, five years from now, 10 years from now, 15 years from now. And it's been some of the most powerful idea generation as well. So going to all of the Park and Recreation Express campsites, inviting the YMCA out to the park. Mickey Fern, who's a kind of an advisor to the project, said he's never seen the type of outreach, especially to youth specifically in any planning process that he's participated in his 35 years of park planning effort. So that's something we're also very excited about and want to share with you as we move forward. We've started to do a little geographic analysis of everything, and so here you see, we were able to collect about zip code data from about 30 of our events, so just a small percentage of the events. But you can see, this is actually, it doesn't show up well on the screen, but this is an outline of North Carolina and all of the zip codes that have come to an event. So people as far away as Asheville, Lumberton, even Norfolk, Virginia, have come to an event at Dix Park. And so it's just starting to show you how we're building this community that knows about the planning process, is excited about the park project as we move forward. In addition, this is a map of obviously Wake County and the Neighborland sign-up. Again, these are people that offer their zip code, so we aren't able to get everyone, because not everyone wants to share their zip code. But you can see here the number of participants that provided their zip code on our online website. In addition, we did a big call for people that wanted a car magnet. So maybe you've seen the green magnets that are on more cars. I keep taking pictures of them, which is probably not the safest thing to do while you're driving, but it still is exciting. But you can see how people are really just interested in getting information, becoming a supporter of the park. And I'm happy to announce that the Conservancy is also going to start a membership program, so that everyone who wants to support this park will have a way to do that in the coming months. So for me, you know, with outreach and engagement, we set an ambitious goal. We still have a lot to do over the next couple of months. We are interested in going to all of the council districts to take the site plan out to the community again, and we'll be reaching out to your policy analysts to do that. But from all of the feedback, the bus tours, the walking tours, the festival booths, there is so much momentum and excitement about the future of this project. Yes, there are some differences of opinion on how we're going to get there, or maybe folks that are like, where's my pickleball court, or where's my Gaelic football field? But overall, there has been a great showing of support from the community at large for the creation of Dix Park. And that's something that I think we should all feel proud of as a city, that there's so much momentum behind this project. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Matt Urbanski to talk about how these ideas have made their way through the master plan process and where we are today.
Thank you. Thank you, Kate. I'm so happy to have this opportunity to speak to you all directly about the plan, which I'll get to in a second, but that, that's pretty impressive, that whole thing. I guess you all have heard that a lot, so it's sort of like, yeah, there's Kate talking about her outreach again. But I, you know, we've done a lot of this. Sometimes we've been asked to do it, sometimes we do it in collaboration with the client. Sometimes the client does it. In this case, I would say that this is the best of any, any kind of public outreach that we've ever been associated with for a park, so. ever been associated with for a park. So just for what it's worth, that's my opinion, or our opinion, about how that all looks. So it might sound like just kind of the same old thing to you, but it's really impressive from our perspective. So we're gonna just talk about the plan and what's happening in it, and do it pretty quickly because we have three meetings, so, and we're at the end of this. You're all gonna get a book with every detail in it, and you could put it on your nightstand and pour over it every night. So this will be a little high level, just to get everybody introduced to everything. So what do we mean by a new standard? One of the things that's happening in the country is there are parks that are out there that are famous now, and people go and visit them, and then they say, I want one of those in my city. And it's not necessarily the run-of-the-mill park, or the neighborhood park that we all need in every one of our neighborhoods, but it's sort of the special parks. And this kind of thing has started to happen over really the last 30 or 35 years, and it has really elevated what we are shooting for. And it was reflected in your request for proposals for master planning and what we've all been working for with Kate and all of the public meetings and everything. So for instance, just as an example, the idea that you would go to a park and have really beautiful horticultural display, or in this case, the thing that people are really interested in is the native North Carolina landscape, this being the state capital especially, that it would celebrate that, and it would be rich and beautiful, and not just, as we say, mow, blow and go landscape, but really something rich and complex and wonderful in every season of the year. And, you know, we've been out with Tom Ehrenhardt, looking at your native landscapes, and it's just an example of a nice park in St. Louis called City Gardens, maybe some of you. It's one of those examples that people talk about. Also, Kate already talked about it, but a major concept of our park is that it's a park for everyone. We have something for everyone. How do you get everyone to go? You have something for everyone. That's how you do it. And so that we call that program, a richness of program and activities. That's our Maggie Daley Park, which is similar in that it's a regional park in Chicago, and attracting people from just, not just the neighborhood, but from all around the whole Chicagoland and greater than that area. And then Clyde Warren Park in Dallas is another good example of a park that is a beautiful setting and then also highly programmed with all kinds of things going on in it. So that takes extra effort and extra planning and extra ongoing effort as well. The thing that really started all of this was the sort of dissolution of Central Park, really, in New York City, our first great park in the country. And I'm old enough to remember it like that, in the late '70s and early '80s on the left there, where it was basically bare dirt, and they had removed a lot of the shrubs for safety reasons. And, you know, basically back then, a park was considered a liability. And then, starting in the 1980s, the Conservancy, Central Park Conservancy, which Kate was visiting at a kind of learning program there just two weeks ago, or a week ago, they really transformed the park into this masterpiece, or kind of restored it, and then also even embellished beyond into this masterpiece. And now it's a place, one of those examples, where people go and they say, this is fantastic, this is beautiful, I want one. And there's a lot behind that story, and a lot of effort that goes into both creating that and maintaining that, and that's what we're aiming for, for you all. When working on the plan, we really start looking at the site from a larger perspective. We're looking at connections, we're looking at transit, we're looking at how people get there, existing systems. And one of the things that's interesting about the site is that everything that has evolved around it had to do with the fact that it was, at one point, it was a mental hospital for a long period of time. And so we get things that are treating it a little bit like a backdoor connection. So there aren't obvious bus connections to the site now. There aren't obvious trail connections necessarily, where we can make them better. For instance, there's not obvious entrances, for instance. So all of these, the relationship to the perimeter is really important part of our thinking, and Kate mentioned that a little bit. So just as an example, the farmer's market kind of service area faces the park now, and so part of our planning is to how to mitigate that and bring the farmer's market as a kind of participatory neighbor into the whole process. Also, there are important patterns that have developed on the site, and that have to do with the shape of the land and where the buildings are, and all of those, and the relationship to the different surrounding neighborhoods. And so it might not be surprising that as landscape architects, we really start with an analysis of the land, and then look at the different kinds of programs and themes that different parts of the site would start to suggest and start to support. And then we start to divide the site up to understand it, and we've identified six major landscapes that each had their own kind, they kind of bring their own thing into the whole park experience, and that is another way of making sure that you get the full diversity of experiences by kind of identifying six different places. So there's three of them, which we call the Grove, the Creek, and the Meadow, that are really more about a kind of what you might almost think of as a traditional park-type of landscape, connecting to the natural, the opportunity to connect to the rural history of the site and of the state, to the wild spaces, to the natural systems. And those are those three. I'll go through those first. And then there's three more that kind of complemented, and almost like kind of yin-yang complementary relationship, which we call the Downtown Gateway, which is a space along Lake Wheeler Road, the Ridge, which is sort of the kind of hilltop where most of the original hospital buildings are, and what we call the Valley, which is where the power plant or steam plant for the hospital is, and you might not have ever been to the Valley, actually, but bringing that in as a participant as well. Something, an early idea that we came out with that kind of links the site together, because sort of the fundamental challenge, one of the fundamental challenges of the site is it's divided by a railroad track. And also that it's a hill. And this is just one of many of the challenges, but this idea of a promenade loop that kind of links the site together, the two halves together, that is generally level walkway, it's a kind of civic walk, it's about one and a half miles long, about a 35-minute walk if you were just gonna stroll all the way around it. It could be used for bikes and pedestrians, and then for, maybe for moving cars around during, in a kind of design-programmatic way during events. It becomes a major feature in linking the site together and connecting those six landscapes. So now we're gonna go through the six, and I'm gonna just wanna give you a kind of high-level concept of what each of them is about. So along Western Boulevard, we have what we're calling the Creek. So Rocky Branch is got, had a sordid history. It's been abused over time. There was a marshland and maybe even ponds, it's hard to tell on the historic maps, but what is a lowland in the old days? A good place to put garbage, and that's what it wound up being. It was filled in as a landfill, and so part of the site, parallel to that, on the west side of the site, this half over here is a 50-plus acre landfill right next to the stream. Then Western Boulevard was also built later on, and that kind of pushed Rocky Branch in from the other side. So all of its natural curves, its natural flood plain was lost. And so that's sad, and it could be a great participant in the park making. So our thought is to move the Rocky Branch more, kind of edge it into the site a bit more, transform part of the landfill to create a more of an expression of open water in that location, and also buffer the Rocky Branch landscape from the Western Boulevard, so it becomes a kind of peaceful place to contemplate nature, really connect with the kind of natural systems of the state and of the region, the Piedmont landscape. So a whole series of things that can happen there on a kind of connecting with nature kind of level. Just to give a little illustration of what we mean, on the top here is a cross-section, as if we just cut right through the branch and through Western Boulevard and the landfill, and it kind of shows you how it's sort of hemmed in between the landfill on the left and the Western Boulevard on the right, and it's in this kind of cut. They call that an incised channel. That's caused by too much water flowing and then too narrow of a space. And so what our idea, working with hydrologists, scientists who are, and engineers who are excellent at this, we've designed a wider flood plain, we've cut back the landfill, looking for opportunities at the closure of the landfill to widen that out. And you could also see the suggestion of landforming along Western Boulevard to acoustically isolate the Rocky Branch Valley, so it will be this kind of peaceful valley with a burbling brook in it, that you, much more desirable thing to visit when you're in the park. Up in the little, up in the corner here, you can see the extent of the landfill, which is an orange on the plan, just to give you a sense, you might not quite grasp the fact that it's that big. But the state wants to close that, and so that's a great opportunity for fixing it. Next is the Grove, and the Grove is probably why we have a project, is what I kind of like to think about it, because it's the part that almost looks like a park already, really looks like a park already. It's the part where the neighbors became involved and planted trees after Hurricane 20 years ago. It's got a beautiful rolling topography and some beautiful trees. It was also part of the original design of the hospital, the kind of most important, significant landscape feature, this kind of pastoral drive that took you up to the front of the original Davis Hospital. It sweeps all the way across the whole northern side of the site, and we're including part of the landfill as part of that. And so our transformation calls for removal of the cottages, creating, creation of a botanical garden, transforming, reshaping and transforming the landfill to have multi-use green fields in there, and then expanding this high-end tree and undulating landform landscape, kind of giving everyone almost exactly what they'd expect in terms of a park landscape. It would have, it could have a botanic garden incorporated into it. Maybe the original drive would be transformed into a multimodal path that really connects you down towards the corner again like it used to. So that is the Grove. And just a kind of artist impression of what that transformation might be like, if it's, if is, on the top is showing some of the beautiful trees that are there, and then the houses that we want to remove, and then the kind of creation of this botanical garden with pedestrian paths interwoven into it, as an example. Moving around counterclockwise, we're coming up to probably the greatest kind of opportunity to connect the site to the kind of rural past of the site. The rural past of the site is a very significant past because of it as a plantation, and then the rural aspect of the site that Dorothy Addicks incorporated into her therapy for mental hospitals, and then the fact that the hospital used agricultural land to sustain itself for a long period of time. It's incredibly important connection. It's also your most impressive space in terms of the big field. So how could we kind of take something that's great and make it even greater is really how we're thinking about this. And we want it, there's a moment of time here that we have that where we may be able to make an incredible connection through the city, which I'll show you here. So the idea is to remove Hunt Drive and buildings that are here and create a connection, expanding the big field to the north, all the way to Western, and then the big ambition is to go over Western with what we would hope would be a land bridge someday, and take you all the way to the Governor Morehead site, and then over to Pullen Park. And then we, the best thing would be to work with the farmer's market and connect south through what they call the Panhandle and down to Walnut Creek. We would be able to get, if we did that, a green space that was a mile long, uninterrupted by roads, that would maybe allow you to walk from Pullen all the way down to Walnut Creek without crossing a street. But this, the meadow is also a really, the opportunity to showcase the natural landscape. We can transition from a moan grass that you have there now to native prairies, to bring in all the richness of the native landscape, to kind of create and enframe this space. Some of you may know or realize that at the bottom of that right now is the kind of loading dock to the farmer's market. Wasn't a bad idea at the time, but now probably not the most perfect relationship, although the wholesale aspect of the farmer's market seems to be quite important. So one thought in terms of this kind of culmination of the natural landscape, we have an idea of ending the meadow with a kind of new water feature, and then creating a hill, and I'm gonna tell you what lands on that hill at the end, but kind of a hill at the bottom that kind of ends the meadow, right in front of it, a low point or a natural pond, and then the meadow sweeping all the way up towards Pullen Park through the whole site. So that's, that is that landscape there. And this is a view, looking up in a low-flying helicopter, looking up through, over what we call the Grotto Garden, which I just mentioned, and up through the length of that meadow, so it gets this new kind of undulating edges, and you can have a sense of the natural features that are there as well. Now on to the kind of more civic and exciting, some of the more exciting elements that are not so much about nature as much as they are about people and other kinds of activities. The Downtown Gateway is a space along or parallel to Lake Wheeler. And what we mean by that is that Lake Wheeler, right now, has not been really considered as a gateway to downtown. It's sort of, it almost feels like a kind of forgotten rural road. That's not surprising, because along that edge was actually a hedgerow that was meant to close you out of the hospital site. It was an Osage-orange hedgerow. And as you know, there are no actual entrances, except for at the very either end of the site into the site from Lake Wheeler. So, and the irony of that is that Lake Wheeler is probably the most human-scaled roads of any of them around the site, and the opportunity to connect on a pedestrian level and with a kind of bus stops and things like that is obvious there. So one of our big ideas is to create a new civic-scaled, regional-attraction play garden at the center, right at the crest of the hill there, somewhat maybe similar to that Maggie Daley Park example I showed you in Chicago, something that would be great for the neighborhoods, but people would come, and if they were visiting the Capitol, they'd probably go visit it as well if they had kids and they had time. But certainly, everybody from around the city would get there a couple of times a year probably with kids. And that would be a kind of invitation into the center of the site, and what we call the Ridge, which I'll get to in the middle in a minute. Also, there's a series of buildings, existing buildings along there, which could be transformed to become a welcoming and active edge along Lake Wheeler. So Lake Wheeler goes from kind of being an unintentional space, which is what it is now, and with, combined with the planning that the city's gonna be doing on the other side of the street, it could become a beautiful corridor and an entrance into downtown, as well as an entrance into the park. And looking at that from the center, we're now looking, looking west with, Lake Wheeler is right in the foreground there, with the suggestion of a bus stop right at the crest of the hill there, and then this inviting play garden that brings you in, and then paths that draw you all the way across the middle of the site. And then really, one of the things that makes this a very unique problem is the fact that Kate alluded to it already, of course, you all know, we have currently more than 80 buildings on the site, and there is this ridge top, I sometimes, when I try to make it sound more poetic, I call it an necropolis, of buildings at the top of the site, including the original, what's left of the original Davis buildings, and then a lot more that were added on. And hospitals, the hospital really evolved from a kind of, almost a pavilion in the park. In other words, something that really had a kind of open relationship with the landscape around it. Remember, they didn't have air conditioning. Remember that agriculture and gardening was part of the therapy. Remember, they needed daylight because they didn't have electric lights. So the building had a kind of very, more porous relationship with the landscape. Over time, if anyone's been to a modern hospital, they've all turned into basically internalized spaceships, right? Where you just kind of go from building to building through little tunnels and tubes, and that's exactly what happened to this hospital over time as well. And so how to transform, how to get rid of some of these buildings, and then transform what is left to be more like pavilions in a park again that are supporting park programs... what is left to be more like pavilions in a park again that are supporting park programs is how we've been thinking about what we call the ridge. And the ridge is outlined or defined by that promenade path that I mentioned earlier. And so the ridge, we keep the original Davis building and have been exploring the idea that a hotel could be used there to help create activity. The idea that we could have a place where, having something to eat, showcasing local agricultural product and food could happen there. There's many useful buildings that also would just help support the park, both from activities and also from maintenance kind of buildings. There's two halls that were original dining halls that could be transformed into public halls and the great thing is there's two of them. Anybody that planned spaces know that if you have swing spaces where one could be used and the other is, you know, maybe being set up or being used by the public or one's being used in an event or something like that, there's a great opportunity for that kind of thing. So that, that is all the kind of thing that we're seeing happening there, a kind of, more of a, a kind of idealized urban landscape kind of excitement. We very carefully analyzed the massings of the buildings, even made a three-dimensional model. This isn't a, this isn't a computer model, this is actually made out of little blocks. And we showed people these. But how can we start to take out some of these weird connectors and things that are sort of unfortunate and also just too much in terms of taking care of for a park? And how could that kind of unfetter or release the other buildings in a way that start to create what we call an urban framework or a set of urban spaces? And then you will be able to, really lots of things you could imagine happening there. We don't feel like we even need to know exactly what it is that happens there. The space is going to start to suggest what can happen. But we also have lots of ideas as well. So one of our, again, artist impressions of what that could be like, the hall, one of the halls is on the, on the left here and one of the old, one of the hospital wings is on the right. The idea of opening up those buildings in a very porous way on the ground floor. You know, our secret ambition is, you know, the ridge is a great place to go on a date, right? No matter what age you are. But the kind of, it's an exciting spot, it's a place to get something to eat, it could have, it could have all kinds of art, art program, performance program, all kinds of things like that. Now, the last spot is, might be a spot you've never been to or aren't really conscious of on the site, but it is, we see as an opportunity. It is, this is the, this is the railroad track here going, and that might be one reason why you might not have been there. And then next to the railroad track was the power plant and that was because they needed to bring coal in to run the power plant. And so we were just up here at the ridge and I had mentioned over here, the bottom of the meadow before. So the idea here is can we activate this site with some kind of attractive element that will bring people to the site, maybe for special events, and then start to give a special new identity additionally to the other things that we've mentioned. And so the big idea here is to build an outdoor performance venue that could have everything from classical music to rock concerts to jazz to Shakespeare in the Park, all of those kind of things. You know, the exact size is, you know, yet to be determined, but it could easily hold 7,500 people or something like that. And then the real kind of showstopper kind of concept is to connect the ridge and that new hilltop at the bottom of the meadow with what we're calling the elevated trestle or a public walkway that's inspired by a railroad trestle. And that would become this level walk off the level walkway of the promenade and connect over the theater and then over, over to the Grotto Garden and create another way across the track. So you're, you're crossing on the promenade loop or crossing on the trestle and you can make a big, you can make a big triangular motion that way as well. And the possibilities architecturally and just as the theatrical space are really amazing. Imagine using the trestle as a kind of theater structure or backdrop, something that supports the sets and the lighting and could be just a fabulous spot to look down from as well and look at the crowds. So that gets us through all six, gives you a bit of a flavor of what's happening in each. Like I mentioned earlier, we're going to be compiling this all in a book where we go through different layers of the park. Both that program layer that I just went through, all of the structural elements, which we call the framework, which, you know, shows you where all the parking is, where the roads are, where the multimodal paths are, all of that major thing. The land analysis that goes into the history of the land as well as the geomorphology and all of the other types of relationships that will come out of the land. And then the last chapter will look at implementation. Some people call it phasing, except for that's sort of optimistic to me. I mean, it's more like projects that could be associated with each other. You all decide probably the actual order of things, but the implementation, how do we go about it? Because it's 300 acres, you don't just start doing it all and you need a strategy of approach. I could, I could get a little bit, a cat out of the bag a little bit on that, which is that really the strategy seems to make sense to start from the perimeter or in a way, secure the perimeter of the site because that's the part that's most in peril in terms of the development of, around it, in terms of, you know, just emerging city around it. Secure that and you could see that parallels with the meadow and the creek and the grove and all of that and Lake Wheeler. And then move towards the middle. And in a way that allows you to get to the ridge top and what that exact vision is last, which is probably good because it gives those ideas more time to mature and develop. And so with that, I think Kate is going to close us out.
So thank you, Matt. So where we are today is we are taking these ideas out to the public. Over the next few months, we'll be very intentional about going to as many groups and as many parts of the city as possible. Matt mentioned all of this will come together in a book that we will give to council for review. And then at our next council work session, we'll really talk about partnership opportunities, phasing and priorities moving forward. So that's where we are today, lots of good work. And now we'd love to stop talking and answer questions that you all may have. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
I have a quick question. As far as the draft online, is set up where citizens can give input as well?
Yes.
And I guess the website is?
There are two places that people can go. They can either go to dickspark.org and there is a slash database and all of the documents are there. They can also go to dickspark.org/ideas and that's where they can actually talk to each other about the ideas for the future of the park. So both of those places have the same information. This presentation's already up there for people to see and so those would be the two places. If I were directing people to one, I'd go to dickspark.org/ideas and that's the best place for folks to give comment. Other questions?
Not a question so much as just an observation. I've heard from a number of people who contacted me and they, they're saying, I see you've already decided to do X, Y, or Z with the park. And I keep saying, no real decisions have been made yet. So I think that's important to make sure that that, people understand that we know we haven't decided to build a hotel necessarily or whatever.
When things get on paper, it feels real. And so it's this interesting balance between wanting to show people enough so that they understand the future, but also letting people know there is, there is time to comment and it's ultimately Raleigh City Council's decision in February where things will be decided. But yeah, that's something we can readdress in our outreach as well through social media and meetings.
I don't know if you want to talk at all about the difference between the master plan and then the design?
That's great, yeah. So the master plan really is, and Matt, feel free to jump in here, it's a framework document to help us make decisions. So there will be some things that we, that are fundamental to the future of the park. So the promenade loop might be one of those, the creation of the creek, like the, there's some intrinsic values to these landscapes that we believe through this community engagement process are critical to the future of the park. Then there are things that are going to be unanticipated. There's a lot of feasibility work that needs to be done. We're talking about removing landfill and so there's these feasibility studies, these design studies that really help us get into the detail of the future park design. So we go from this framework document that helps us make decisions, that sets some criteria, to the design phase, which is where we measure things out, we test soil, we look at water quality. And from that, we produce construction documents that then, you know, everyone will have their shovel and will be able to break ground. So there's a lot of work necessary between the master plan and construction, breaking ground that we still need to do, but we really do want to ensure that this community is excited and understands what this master plan is and the vision for the future of the park.
So the environmental studies happen after a master plan, ideas kind of finalized?
Right. So there's, we've started some work on that. So when, you know, when the city purchased the property, they did a lot of due diligence. And so we have a good foundation, but for example, if we decide the creek is a good idea, there's going to need to be a series of studies that say, okay, we need to work with the Department of Environmental Quality, we need to work with our stormwater folks, we need to work with our public utility folks to think about those pieces. So additional study is needed to get ready to construct elements of the park.
Okay. So Kate, as far as Western Boulevard, is that pretty much going to stay where it is then as far as this?
Yeah, so we're not moving, we don't have any intention of moving Western Boulevard. But you know, it's the Bus Rapid Transit Corridor, so the design of Western Boulevard will look differently in the future because it's going to accommodate Bus Rapid Transit. We are rethinking the creek on the park side, not on, kind of within the right-of-way, unless y'all tell us otherwise and then we'll go talk to DOT.
So Kate, will you sort of explain the timeline here that we're looking at, that the link of creating a park and the master plan and then the phasing of that and just how long it will take to phase into this park? Because sometimes people think about parks in terms of we will see it in the next three to five years. So I want us to set some expectations for the public as to how long this park will be moving forward and all the opportunities that will come with that.
That's a great question and we will talk a lot about the specifics of phasing at the next meeting, but big picture. So if we, if we, if City Council adopts this plan in 19, then we're going to need to do a couple of years, and you know, within that plan adoption, we hopefully will identify some first projects that we all think are good first moves for the community. We'll need to do probably a couple of years of that feasibility, design work, construction work. We do hope though that we can do some significant construction projects within the next 10 years, depending on resource availability, depending on the success of our philanthropic partners and fundraising. So, you know, in our crystal ball, we would love to see some things that happen within the next 10 years, but a master plan really sets a 25-year, 50-year, 100-year vision. This park, this size, we will be looking at the incremental construction of it based on resource and funding availability, but would like to see some smaller things happen that maybe aren't landscape-based in the next couple of years. So are there some things that we can do next year, the year after, to, to improve the basic visitorship? So instead of having porta-potties, maybe there's some sort of Big John like the Red Hat Amphitheater has. So there will be little projects that we may want to explore in the interim between now and real construction. So ambitiously, we could see construction of some earlier projects within the next three years that would take us to 10. Our leases with DHHS expire in 2025, so that opens up a whole nother area of the park we can work with. So we'll get into a lot more specifics at your next meeting, but this is a, it's a long-term project. Hopefully I'm still around when we see the completion of it. Or, I think an example too, Matt's been working on a project in Tulsa. It was a 60-plus acre site, almost 70-acre site that, very similar to some of the ideas and programs of Dick's Park, they had a private infusion of a lot of money that they built that park within 10 years. So a lot of it is resource, resource, oh, I'm sorry, within eight years, but a lot of it is resource-dependent.
Any other questions?
So Kate, it's a wonderful presentation. I believe that we are certainly in the stages of really being able to share with the public what this park can be for all people and also to not strapping ourselves to too many things that don't give flexibility for the park in the future and what might need to be there then that is not today.
Right.
And also securing the edges, I think that's a very important part since, I think y'all didn't mention this, but just taking the fence down and the hedge down along Lake Wheeler Road. Sort of opened it up for people to realize that it really is a park and a park for them. So just those subtle little changes around the perimeter and as Matt suggested, in securing the perimeter might be really important. And it also helps engage people to understand that it is their park, even those small steps. But I think we're well on our way to a magnificent park.
Thank you for saying that, yeah. Those small things are exactly what we want to do. Taking down fence may have not seemed like a big idea, but we had a community picnic where members of the Lake Wheeler neighborhood, for the first time, were able to cross Lake Wheeler safely, of course, and come into the park. And that's pretty powerful to, for those, those folks that live there.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Matt, thank you so much.
Other questions or comments?
Great job.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks, Matt and Adrian for coming down and everybody.
Thank you everyone.
Conservancy for working hard.
Thank you for y'all being here and.
All your support. It's going to be great. Well, thank y'all very much. I look forward to seeing you in a month.
Yeah, we look forward to our books.
Yeah.
Anything else, Mr. Manager? Okay, meeting's adjourned.
Thank you all.
Thank you.[1743.26]